Okay, good evening. Welcome to the special council meeting February 19, 2019. Roll call, please.
All council members are present.
Okay, may I join the council and pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you, everybody, for being here on special meeting, especially to the city council. Thank you for making the time to do this study session. All right, so this is a continuation of the study session done, I guess, three, four weeks ago. And so, staff.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, Tom Williams, City Manager. And as you just mentioned, Mr. Mayor, this is a continuation of a study session on Millbrae Sarah Station, known as TOD number one. I'll hand it over to Mr. Brad Meisner, Community Development Director, for a quick presentation.
Thank you, City Manager. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, Brad Meisner, Community Development Director. Tonight is the continuation of the study session that relates to Millbrae Sarah Station project. If you recall, we began this discussion back on January 23rd. So this evening, really, the objectives are to continue the study session that, again, began on January 23rd, review the revisions that we have received from the project applicant, receive an update concerning the neighborhood discussions that have been ongoing, and then also, of course, for council to receive additional feedback concerning the design, or, I'm sorry, really, to get that feedback from you to the project applicant. So I'm just going to jump right into the community outreach meetings and compliance issues. If you recall, this is a project that has direct adjacency to the Hemlock neighborhood. That is a split-zone neighborhood, R1, and also commercial zoning. Because of that, there has been some sensitivity around the size and mass of the building. That's led to a number of discussions with the project developer, the neighbors, the directly-affected neighbors, as well as city staff. More specifically, back in November, there was a community meeting, a number of people, about 30 people from the Hemlock neighborhood showed up to have a conversation with the developer, as well as city staff. And then, really, in earnest, since December, December through up to this last Saturday, city staff has been working to meet with the developer and the residents to try to come to some level of agreement on what types of physical improvements could be built within this project to help soften some of that transition between the new building and the existing neighborhood. Again, some of those issues have been because of the 45-degree angle that we've discussed. That is a development standard that's within the specific plan. There's been a number of concerns about balconies on the existing building and privacy, noise, visual, and other impacts from those balconies, and also just generally construction noise and dust and disruption during the construction phase. So I am happy to report tonight that there does seem to be some level of agreement between the developer and the residents. Very specifically, the north-facing balconies on the sixth floor and lower, adjacent to the Hemlock, will be removed from the building. This is on the north elevation. And balconies will be moved inward. Balconies on floors seven through 10 will remain. There will be other specific improvements that the developer has agreed to fund and construct to help with that transition, and specifically to the neighbors at 500 and 503 Hemlock. A 12-foot wall along the property line will be constructed. Planting of tall trees adjacent to the wall will be planted. There will be a deck cover and pergola that will be built for the residents at 500 Hemlock. There will be a temporary sound and visual barrier put up during construction. And then specifically, there were comments about that north elevation, not only concerning privacy, but also with its visual impact and how it looks towards the neighborhood. So in an effort to sort of get at some of those concerns, which was really about how does the building relate more in a residential manner to the residential neighborhood, the applicant has changed the color palette and added some tiles along that north elevation, and we'll get into the visuals of that later. And really, again, that was to try to soften the appearance of the building to the neighbors to the north. And then the neighborhood would not be objecting to that 45-degree angle issue that is part of the specific plan standards. And then, last but not least, all of this would be documented in the formal design review permit as conditions of approval and will carry with the project through construction. This diagram here is to show you specifically what has occurred concerning the balconies. You see the two red balconies at the top of the drawing, that's building R2. Those balconies have already been removed in previous conversations. And then where you see the purple areas, this is where balconies would be removed from the sixth floor and below. And then, last but not least, there's a balcony that would remain that's much closer to the Taco Bell along El Camino Real. This is the new updated elevation showing those balconies inset that face off to the east towards the railroad tracks. You can see the privacy wall and the planting that would be planted along California Extension. And then here is the new rendering of the north elevation, and it shows all the materials that would be used, more specifically, really, this sort of soft, I'd say, kind of a yellow color. Those are metal panels and colored tile panels that would be used to try to soften that appearance to the north. And then here's the building elevation in its totality. Again, we've had considerable conversation about the 45-degree plane. Again, the building R1 is not subject to that 45-degree plane in that it's directly adjacent to commercially-zoned portion of the Hemlock neighborhood. The R2 building is required to comply with that 45-degree setback. And so, in order to allow for this design, which the city does prefer in terms of the way it's been designed, there will be a need for some deviation from the specific plan to allow that portion of the R2 building to exceed into that plane. So that's something that staff will be analyzing, what is the right pathway, and we'll be prepared to address that when we come back for the formal hearings. So that was a lot, very quickly. Really, we're just looking to finalize the study session here this evening and then move on to the planning commission for the formal hearing, and then, of course, it will be back before council as soon as we're able. And with that, staff is recommending that we continue the study session this evening, and we're here to answer any questions and hear feedback, as well as the project applicant. And so, the matter is before council. Thank you.
Does the applicant have any other thing to add? No? Yes? No? Okay, fine. Questions from the council? Councilwoman Leiva.
So you started with the study session, saying that you've had numerous updates concerning the neighborhoods, and the neighborhood is good with this? With the outcome is, everybody's happy?
Yes, that's my understanding, yes.
Councilwoman Pappin.
I'm sorry.
I'm seeing faces in the audience. That's the only thing I'm worried about. So like, are we having a public comment on this prior to?
Yeah, we'll be invited to comment. I just give the council a few minutes, and then we'll, is that okay?
Right, so the consensus is, everybody's happy.
As far as, you know, the residents that we've been engaged with, at this point, we know that there is agreement on the physical improvements that have been agreed to be constructed, and so people are happy with what's been agreed to thus far.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay.
So, just to be clear here, so it's been worked out with the neighborhood, and the 45-degree setback is no longer going, if it's been agreed with the neighborhood, then this council needs to give a variance as to the 45-degree?
No, it's not a variance.
Oh, well, what are we talking about here?
Right, so essentially, and also, City Attorney may want to weigh in on this, but we've been looking at the different ways in which there are deviations from the specific plan. There is one provision that does allow for minor adjustments. We're still analyzing that provision to see if that's available to us at the staff level. If that's not, then one other approach would be to actually do an amendment of that standard within the specific plan, and that's something that the city would be prepared to process forward.
So you're saying, to be clear, that staff can make that decision without this council's approval?
No, I'm saying that there is one provision within the specific plan that allows for minor deviations. That language has been challenging for us. We've been looking to see whether or not that is something that we could capitalize on, but we're thinking probably what would be a more appropriate approach would perhaps be to do a specific plan amendment that addresses the intent of what the step back is meant to be for this particular project.
And how long would something like that take?
It really could be processed in concurrence with the application as it's moving forward through its formal hearing process.
I'm not a fan of the specific plan, but doesn't this set a bad precedent?
In this particular situation, I think we'd be able to draft up a specific amendment that's drafted so narrowly that it really would not impact other properties throughout the city.
It would have to be exceptionally narrow for me to like it in any way, shape, or form. Okay.
Vice Mayor Holber.
Yes, to echo Councilwoman Pappin's concern, I'm also concerned about the possibility of amending the specific plan. I think the 45-degree requirement was in there for a reason. Personally, I would prefer to do this as a variance, if we could, or either as a council variance, or if it's within whatever requirements, whatever authority the staff has. But unless it's some type of extremely narrow change that maintains, you know, the intention of the 45-degree setback and, you know, doesn't allow developments to go up, right up next to, you know, residential, single-family neighborhoods, because if it did, if we're completely eliminating the 45-degree requirement, that would not be what you're proposing.
Right, and that was not the intent. I mean, I think we're still working through exactly what that pathway should be. In any event, if we did pursue to go through the specific plan amendment, it would not be with the idea of eliminating the 45-degree standard and whole. It would be really just to look at the particular situation that we find ourselves in with this project and try to come up with language that would really be a very narrowly-drawn amendment.
Okay, and in my discussions earlier with the city manager, my understanding is the possibility to do it by staff authorization, that would be within the 10% variance that's provided within, variance maybe is the wrong word, but 10% deviation that's allowed within the specific plan?
Right, again, and so, again, in the-
Or within the development agreement?
Well, in the specific plan particularly, it does give some latitude under what they call minor adjustments or deviations from the standards. It sets this 10% threshold. The issue that we're dealing with is exactly how to apply that. We haven't been faced with that situation as of yet, so we want to make sure that, you know, it's very defensible if the city needs to pursue that.
Okay, because at the time, it was presented as, you know, 10%, like a possibility of increasing the number of units by 10% or, you know, certain square footages by 10%, not changes to, you know, the architecture or the overall footprints of the buildings. So perhaps part of that clarification could be a 10% variation if it's granted by council approval or something to that extent, so that we're a little bit more clear as to what that 10% actually relates to, or we have some process for how that 10% is granted or not granted to an applicant.
Let's have Councilman Schneider.
We gave a number of other things that council wanted to see, but for right now, my questions have to do with the color tile panels. Do we have samples of that material? And is that going to wrap all of R1 and R2? Or is it only going to be on one side of R1?
Good. Let me, can we just finish this conversation about?
Oh, if you want to finish the 45 degrees, sure, sure.
And then we'll just come back to this, is that okay?
Okay, because my question was that I know that the neighborhood also had concerns on material, the type of material, as well as the balconies. And you didn't go into, you talked about the tile and the panels, but not what are they going to look like?
Okay, we'll come back to that, thank you.
I kind of forgot my question a little bit, but with regards to the 10%, could we ask our attorney for some advice? Where does that lay today? Because Councilmember Holber's comments make a lot of sense with me with the 10%. How are they defined today?
We're, I think, the staff is correct. We're still sort of working through how that might be applied. I've advised that the 10% works very well, where you have a 100-foot height limit, and you're going to get nine and a half more feet. That's easy. I think we're struggling to see how that would apply in this context. And so, the specific plan amendment might be the more straightforward way. I should note that this particular restriction only applies in two places, here and on the other side of the tracks adjacent to the city corporation yard. So it's a very limited provision, and it would be easy to draft an amendment that only altered it with regard to this location. So I have no concern about our ability to do that.
Perfect, thank you.
So before we move on to that, okay, so explain clearly what happens at this point in time related to this element.
Before you even go to that, if you mind, you explain to everybody what's needed to be shown in order to qualify for a variance?
Well, yeah, in this particular instance, we're not talking about an actual variance process. What we're talking about is either, one, being able to apply the language as it currently exists within the specific plan that relates to this 10% ability to grant an adjustment. But as Mr. Conneron stated, the cleaner version may be to look at a very narrowly-drawn amendment of the specific plan to address this particular site. So those are the two pathways that we have before us. We have to make some analysis as to which is probably the best for the city. And then, depending on what that is, we have two processes. The 10% deviation, as it's stipulated in the specific plan as it relates now, is a provision that authorizes staff to make a determination, right? And then we can go from there as to whether or not that decision were to be appealed or something of that nature. But as it stands, the way the specific plan is written, the department director would have the ability to make a 10% ruling. If that's not the case, then we would be talking about doing a specific plan amendment, which would take some process. It would be probably a city-sponsored amendment, and we'd have to bring that forward. We'd bring that along at the same time as the project is moving forward. So it would take council authorization to amend the specific plan.
But if I may, just jump in here a little bit, so to answer Councilmember Pappin's question, so this is a design review entitlement, and so any exception to the development standard on the 45 degrees, once we get to a public hearing, you will see that, and you will have to grant that as part of the entitlement. So the last decision on this entitlement will be before the city council. So you will see that, and you will have the ability to take action on that. The point here is we're trying to achieve an objective to, you know, address the developers' submittal, as well as address the issues and remediate those issues that the neighborhood had. And I think so far, we've achieved that. The public will speak here in a minute. So now, the question is, how do we do that? If we get favorable direction from all of you this evening, what's the path to protect us legally from some other challenge that somebody could come and challenge us on this provision? So that's really the objective that we're trying to achieve, is to protect us on any legal challenge from a variance of that development standard. We don't think it'll be anybody in the Hemlock neighborhood, because they are in agreement, but it could be anybody else. So that's the objective we're trying to-
My question still is, was it different gene of doing a narrowly amendment to specific plan and going for the variance process? And I understand the variance process is probably a lot more hurdles you would have to go through in order to grant the variance.
So Mayor, I'll refer to the city attorney to answer this.
Need to be a little bit careful with our terminology. So the term variance in a land use sense is not, that's really not an available method here. That's something, when you deal with a property that's got a unique situation and needs to get a special benefit or special treatment. What we have here are really two pathways. One is this staff-driven 10% adjustment ability, which is, you're varying from the standards, but it's, or I think we're calling it as an adjustment, and then the amendment to the specific plan. So those are, to me, those are the two pathways that have been identified. And again, we're, this is relatively new. I think this was resolved over the weekend, so now we're looking at how to implement it. So, just so it's clear, so the staff adjustment or amending the specific plan.
Councilwoman Pappin.
I'm deeply concerned about this staff adjustment stuff, because for the last year and a half, two years, we've had developers come before us and say, well, staff told us we could. So, I mean, I'd love to get consensus from this council that that can't happen. I mean, I'm so glad the developer's working it out, and we are headed in a direction that may work for everybody, but this quote-unquote "staff discretion" thing, I think, has gotten us in a lot of issues, which concern me. I had one other quick question here, is if there is a decision to modify or somewhat update the station plan as to this one very limited aspect, would we also be looking at any other little areas, not to withhold or disturb Mr. Muzi's project here, that need a little touch-up, but that can be related later? I just leave you with that thought. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So if I may, address that question first, Mr. Mayor. So I think if the council had already approved the development permit, the design review permit, then the 10% adjustment at the discretion of the planning director could be implemented, but nothing's been approved. And so, again, I go back to this entitlement is not going to stop at the planning commission. It will be brought to the city council for a final public hearing. So I think that that issue is, on the 45 degrees, is something that we would not implement. It would only be after the fact, if the project was approved, then there's that 10% discretion. So I think in this case, we wouldn't do that, because you have not approved the development project. So we will bring to you a project that complies then with the proposed amendment, and that action, as the city attorney said, can run concurrent. So we can amend the specific plan and then approve the development project, or consider approval of the development project in one evening, if that makes sense. So we're not going to bring something to you that then the planning director's staff then needs to further vary 10%. You will actually see, and it'll be presented to you, the project, which will be approved without any additional need for a variance. I hate to use the word variance, I apologize. Modification, modification to the development standard. I mean, that's really what we're looking at, this is a development standard in the specific plan, and we're modifying that.
Okay.
Yeah, I appreciate that. This is not the developer that keeps saying that staff approved a bunch of stuff when they didn't.
And I can assure-
Nor do they have the authority to do so.
Yeah, I'm overly conservative in that, just so you know. I would, if there is a question on a project of this nature, any project of this size, I would bring it to the city council or planning commission anyway, even if we did have the staff discretionary authority. It's too important of a project to not bring it forward.
Well, before you arrived, Mr. Williams, we've already stated that that has to happen. So, for these projects, thank you, though, for that wonderful thought.
Okay, so can we move on to design then? Is that okay? All right. So we're going to go through the design, and then I'll take public comments in some time after, a little bit into that. Is that right? Yes?
Just as a matter of the public's, would it be more accommodating to hear from the public first?
It's fine. I just think the public would like to hear what we have to say, too, so then they can ask us if we have any, you know?
Let's be respectful of the public first.
Well, I'm trying to be respectful to everybody, so. Okay, so if the preference, the council has the preference for public comment, that's fine. So I only have one speaker card, but if you still want to speak, you can feel free to fill out a card, or you can fill out the slip after you come up. So George, check Apocalypse.
Chappolis.
Chappolis, sorry. I should know better.
We only did soccer how many years? I don't know.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I never had known your last name, so.
So my name is George Chappolis. I'm a local, oh, sorry, microphone. Is that better? Okay, I'm kind of short, so I have to just get at the right height. I'll wait till the siren's done. George Chappolis, local Millbrae Realtor and Millbrae resident. So I'm here tonight as a substitute speaker for Samatail County Association of Realtors. I was called by Gina Zari, who is our government affairs director about an hour and a half ago, who could not make this for an emergency of some sort. And she asked me if I could come and read Sam Carr's opinion, so I said, sure. So you'll have to forgive me. This is the first time I've actually read when I'm reading this, okay? It's not rehearsed or anything. And the opinions expressed here are not necessarily the opinions of the reader, me. So anyway, to the city council of Millbrae, Samatail County Association of Realtors supports the Millbrae-Serra Station Project. This project is important to the future of Millbrae for several reasons. We appreciate that the council has tried to be sensitive to the concerns of the Hemlock neighborhood, but this project serves the needs of the whole community of Millbrae and should be approved in order to meet the needs of the whole community. Important points. Wow, looks like my volume got turned down. One, there will be 444 new housing units for Millbrae, which will include 66 low and moderate income units restricted for 55 years. Number two, 13 and a half million in one-time fees to the city. Number three.
Too close to the mic.
No, you're too close, George. Thank you.
I'm not used to this.
No, no, you're fine.
They said that they promised it wouldn't be scary, so.
Ah.
So if my voice is scary, I'm sorry.
No, it's not that.
I do run open mics, however, but, you know, I'm not used to modulation in here. Number three, 16 million in new infrastructure, including an extension of California Drive to reduce traffic at Millbrae Avenue. Number four, 441,000 new net revenue to the city every year. And number five, the Millbrae schools will benefit with 1.1 and a half million one-time fee to kindergarten through eighth grade Millbrae School Plus, plus 2.3 million in new property taxes to all Millbrae schools serving Millbrae every year. The concessions to the Hemlock neighbors. The developer here has tried to take into account the concerns of the Hemlock neighborhood and has made several major concessions. Number one, redesigning balconies so they do not overlook the Hemlock neighbors. Number two, putting in a 12-foot-high wall. Number three, putting in very large trees to screen the project from the Hemlock neighborhood. Number four, paying for a pergola to cover the rear deck of the Ducote's house. Number five, additionally, although this building will be 60 feet away from the end of Hemlock, the developer has stepped back from the building to the first floor, to six floors, as an added concession, which will cause a significant loss in the number of housing units to be built. Number six, redesigning the exterior elevation of the residential units as requested.
George, we've already gone through those. Go ahead and sum up. Can you sum up, please?
Thank you for looking at the future of Millbrae and approving this plan that Millbrae needs for its future.
Perfect. Thank you.
I'm only doing what I was asked.
No, you did.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, Millie?
Hi, I don't want to waste too much time, but I just want to say how happy I am to hear on the recording while I was getting him ready that it sounds like we're finding a way to move forward with as much of the housing as possible, and thank you so much for that. And also to you Hemlock neighbors, who I understand have to go along with some change now. But yeah, I think it'll be really great for all the families and everyone else who can enjoy Millbrae and keep it a vibrant community. And it looks like Bert wants to come up. Hey, Bert, can you say thank you?
Nope.
Good job.
Okay, well, thank you all so much.
Hey, Christina. Thank you.
I just wanted to say that from our last meeting, design session, we have made progress. To answer your question, are we happy? No, we're not happy. It's an agreement. We've compromised quite a bit. As a neighborhood, we felt we were put into a position that we really should have never been put in the first place to wrangle with the developer on things that are just basic and fundamentals to living next to a building so big. We have residents who cannot be here tonight. Candidly, it's a very stressful situation. We're exhausted. There's a lot of folks who did express their concerns in writing. I have dozens of letters. These are all neighborhood letters in opposition to the design and a request for changes. So I'm thankful that we made progress. I think we still have a very long way to go, and I know you have some challenges ahead. And to the applicant, I just want to make sure that you understand we continue to express our concerns and hope that you will continue to hear them, and thank you.
So let me ask those questions then. So are the issues that the neighborhood have, have they been addressed or been addressed? Or what is?
Yeah, we met on Saturday and, you know, came to an agreement, particularly with the balconies. I mean, everybody knows. I don't think there should be balconies on the building at all facing the neighborhood. It's just there's a flaw in the size of the building and the height by a single-family residential neighborhood. It's a mistake. And, you know, can we correct it now? We're sort of got to deal with the cards that we're dealt with. And, you know, the applicant in that regard has an advantage, which is why we sought, you know, to band together as a community. I think that the changes you saw tonight are reasonable. We can live with the modifications. The balconies on the upper floors will be set back on the building that's closest to our property, so I think that that will help. But you guys have a lot of development in front of you. And again, this is just, this is just a mistake to have that kind of development so close to a single-family home. And I think to have to take two years to get where we are today is also been a real hardship, particularly on me and my family. It's stressful. It's a financial burden. And there are a lot of things that we, as a family, have suffered, you know, in addition to family time and private time. But that said, we can live with the design, and, you know, I know the applicant compromised on that, and we recognize that. So, yeah, I think we're as close as we can be to an agreement.
Thank you. Yeah, I think that it would be, it would be seamless, disingenuous to tell you that, you know, that, you know, it's a big impact, and we thank you for it.
There are a lot of conditions that go along with this plan or agreement, so, you know, that's another hurdle. And, you know, I've been in contractual discussions with the applicant, and it's very intimidating, and it's very expensive. So I feel like, again, on drawing and paper, we have something in agreement, but, you know, this is going to need to be written in a very ironclad fashion so there aren't, you know, ways to loophole or wiggle out of some of the conditions that we've expressed that we do expect with regards to the balconies and the way they face and the wing walls and those kinds of things.
Well, I think that, I'm sorry, I think that the city, its staff is trying to address the needs of the neighborhood as best possible legally, as much as we can.
They've done a great job. Staff has done a great job. I can't tell you how many meetings we've had to address it.
And I think we'll continue to do that. As far as I can hear from the council, I think they're very concerned about the impact on the neighborhood.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Schneider.
Can I add a question?
Yeah.
Sure. Okay. So I know from the last study session, we had talked about materials. Where are you with materials?
We saw the same plan you have, which visually seems to be much warmer tones. The neighbors still think it looks like a medical building, but I think that's an improvement. I think the, it's hard to tell just on a printed piece of paper, of course, but it looks like wood tones or softer earth tones will be more consistent. You know, still convinced I can find a high-rise residential building somewhere along the Palinsa. I haven't given up my search, but, you know, some of the examples that I sent to you that the neighborhoods, you know, really liked were obviously much shorter buildings. And so I understand that that type of construction, construction isn't feasible for the applicant, which is why it probably does differ. But, you know, the neighborhood still wants to see it as a flavor that sort of blends at that location.
And just so that I understand, when this comes back as a hearing to the planning commission, there'll be more, some newer drawings, maybe more detailed drawings? Or is this pretty much what we're going to be looking at through the rest of the process? The document that we had from January and the drawing, the updated five drawings that came in on tonight's packet?
Right. I think the visuals you've been seeing along have been, you know, a design packet. What you'll have before you when we come forward with the formal hearing are the full architectural plans, will have colored elevations. And then what staff will also do is draft a report that really starts to call out all the materials of all the elevations of each building and really gets into a deep dive in detail on what it is that you're looking at.
Okay, because I think what we saw last time and what we looked at with the samples that were provided last time is instead of that very solid metallic-y kind of surface, it was a more textured surface. I don't know if you guys have talked about texture or if that's something that will come to the hearing.
And I'll have the project applicant speak to that. We certainly will have the materials.
Since we have Mr. Cote here. So help me understand, the city and the developer, or the neighborhood and the developer have come to some agreements. Is that a second set of documents that gets written up? What's protecting the neighborhood to whatever has been agreed upon?
I'm sorry, I thought you were asking a question.
Yeah, I wasn't sure who to direct it to. Thank you.
So when the design review permit staff report comes back before council, there will be conditions of approval that will run with this project, that will be mandated, that they'll be, need to be implemented during the plant tech process, and they will not be able to get a building permit until such time as they've satisfied the obligations that Mr. Cote has been speaking about.
Okay. And we'll work reciproc, we'll be working with the neighborhood then so that it's not, oh, surprise, we come to a formal meeting and suddenly we've got to add things to it? That'll be part of the staff report before it goes to planning?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, and just, again, the city staff has been terrific in terms of being that liaison and making sure that we understand what the applicant's, you know, asking and vice versa. So that's really been a tremendous amount of help to kind of get to where we are.
Has those letters been circulated with the council already? Are those new letters that you have in your hand?
So some of them have. I need to check to see if all of them have, actually.
Okay. I think the council would probably.
You should have close to 30.
So we'll have to check.
Yeah, I'll check for you, but you should have close to 30 letters.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Pappin.
You're good. Thanks. I want to be clear with the speakers that speak here so there's no misunderstanding to the public, because in the past, okay, the concepts, in other words, the number of housing units, the number of retail, everything is established. We are talking about design. So we are not changing the number of housing units. We're not changing anything here. For this project and the BART project, those numbers have already been approved by this council. So that is not going to change. We are here to talk about the design elements, and it's our job to ensure that the city of Millbrae gets a quality design moving forward on all these projects, not settling for just anything here. I have to agree with what Mr. Cote said, is that this is looking like a hospital. And there's nothing really, we'll get into the different panels and such, as Ms. Schneider said here, but as it sits right next to a beautiful office building, this housing complex, to me, does look like a hospital. And that's not really acceptable at this point. So if we want to talk about the different, I see they took off the Serra sign. Explain to me how we can make this.
Oh, wait a minute. Okay, so do you still want, are you still, you know?
I would like to see something that slightly modifies this. It doesn't look so institutional and hospital-like. The side of the building, when you get it from a different elevation, it looks somewhat interesting. But side by side with the office building, which is, again, we didn't know, page four or what? Bring up the number of these pages. Page 22 shows them side by side.
Okay, Councilwoman Aliva.
So to the developer, in regards to that, one of the concerns might be the windows. And when everything's the same unified window covering, you could have something like window coverings that are shuttered or curtained or hospital-like. And one of my concerns would have been, I really didn't know if this was the time to bring it up, or I brought it up in closed session, I think. But if you see some of the developments, like in Redwood City, or even our, I think it's a Hilton or Sheraton down the street, when they do the colored curtains, is there a way that we can protect ourselves so that it's uniformed, so that it looks home-like on the window coverings? And it sounds really petty, and I'm not going there with if you can or can't, but I fear that we'll have like red curtains and then orange curtains and then blue curtains, and it'll look mismatched to that type. Is there a way that we can work with that with your HOA or whatever is going to be into, because of the windows? And I think, I think I'm trying to solve the issue of the hospital-type look.
Well, let me express one thing, okay? When you remove the balconies, you alter the appearance of the building. You flatten the building. That's what happens.
Uh-huh.
Okay? So to solve one problem, we have now an aesthetic issue that's of concern to you. I can assure you that the companies that we're talking to, and if you look at generally hotels, how they operate is very different from the way apartments operate. In this instance, given that these are rentals, they will all have the same, you know, curtains that will be uniform. We're not going to go, it's not today's style. It may have been in 1962, you know, to have patches on buildings because people like to wear patches. That's not today's style. It might be in 20 years. I can't, fashions change, so I don't want to predict the future.
I'm not trying to design. I want to make sure that it looks home-like or it's going to look good to Millbrae.
I have engaged the best architects that I can find to design the best I have engaged the best architects that I can find to design the best product for Millbrae. You know, I, I can't tell you, if you want to create a condition that all of the curtains have to be uniform as a design criteria, fine. I can't imagine that anybody today would not do that. But this is, you know, you have approved a project in your Millbrae Station area specific plan that is this project. Okay? This project has not been hidden under any bushel. It's been the same project from day one, actually before day one. And we're trying to make accommodations for design. And we've listened to the neighborhood and we've, you know, even though aesthetically I think it hurts the building, we've made the adjustment to the balconies as requested. You know, now to have, have it come the other way that it looks more institutional, that, when you mess with design, that's what can happen.
Can I speak? So Vince, actually, I'm trying to help you out here, because I get where Councilmember Pappen is coming from with that institutional look. And I don't really feel it's institutional, but I, there was comments prior to this meeting with regards to, oh, this is, this is their living room. You're going to see their living room. And my concern might be that, or what I can help here with, if you can help us, is how can we make it look more home-like or more apartment-like? And is there a way that we can put into the apartments or to whatever, whoever's running the apartments, that there is the type of window coverings that would make aesthetically look nice to the neighbors and to the city? And I'll give you an example, if you don't mind. If you take the exit off Marsh Road and there's a Redwood City office building, it's very similar to the building that is the architect that you're presenting to us. And it's, it's a, it's a business, but you see the desks and the cords, and you see the TVs, and you see the computers and such. And I think that it would be helpful for value, for neighborhood, and for the City of Millbrae, if we could somehow impose a way that it could be aesthetically beautiful to look home-like and not just institutional-like or hospital-like or whatever terms have been used. It would be a simple solution. We had that.
Not clear. We don't, I'm assuming you don't, I mean, I don't want to be looking at people, the back of people's TV sets.
I don't. That's my point. So if we could, if we could put, because you said when you're on El Camino, that would be somebody's living room on that, on that corner unit. So if in fact, there's a way that we could put, some sort of way that you're going to furnish these or establish these, so that they're not looking into the living room, but it's going to be uniformed with whatever, okay, I think. I don't know. Do you understand what I'm saying? Thank you.
Mayor and council members and members of the community, I'm Bill Higgins of Architecture International. I think what Councilmember Olivia is talking about is something very common in all the apartment buildings that we have designed. Because they are rental units, the operator of the, of the complex can mandate and actually install the actual window coverings, whether it's Mecca shade, a shade-type device, or a leveler blind, or a horizontal blind, or a vertical blind. So there will be uniformity in the window treatment throughout the entire residential units. Obviously, residents will either raise them, lower them, move them to the side. It shows that people are living there. Living rooms, especially the ones on the corner of El Camino, you have great opportunity there. This is a great views from that, and you're up 20 feet. The first unit starts 20 feet up. Great views to the hills, great views to north, to San Francisco, to the bay. So you want to make sure that there is the transparency, that someone gets light and gets views in their living room. But the proper window covering is a very good system to help provide privacy, privacy when they want it, to provide openness when they want it. And we are looking at the glazing of that, you know, we're looking at tinted glass, which we showed last time. So there is some, some shading aspect to the glazing, as well as some privacy aspect to the glazing. There is an opportunity, even on that corner, we could make, introduce a glass similar to what the office building has, which is a fritted glass, which also has a little bit of a, of a pattern to it, which also allows for more privacy. But I think the intent of the, of the design of the buildings is a contemporary building. This is in a, in a 21st century. We're right next to a multi-model station, next to a contemporary office building, and we want to make sure that this is a community of new, a new development. And I can say that the materials that the developer's using on the project are high-quality. And I can go through them right now, that this is a type-one construction, concrete, post-tension slab, one of the highest-quality buildings in the town of Millbrae. So I, you know, I could maybe show you what some of the materials that were discussed between the development manager and the, and the neighborhood to give you further, illustrate how we listened from last time and are now looking at introducing not just some soft, warm colors, but those that have some texture and a material, a materiality, a more of a cementous, semiticious material, more of a stone-like look to it, to give it more of a residential character and maybe offset some of your concerns.
And I, and I could appreciate all of that. I like the project. Don't get me wrong. It's, it's the, it's mostly glass. The, the project is mostly windows. So I'm concerned a little bit for the neighborhood and for us, the City of Millbrae, and for the project values, that it would be uniformed to look not institutionalized, but maybe a little home-like. And, and I worry about, not worry, I don't worry. I'm concerned with thinking that maybe that would be a good, if you're going to manage it, and you can say the window coverings have to be such and such, so to be more uniform to the, to the neighborhood and to the city.
That would, would be the case in an apartment rental, that usually is the case, where the management does control the window coverings.
Perfect.
And each, you know, since they are rental, each unit, people move into a rental unit that has the same window covering.
And I think that would help Councilmember Pappen's idea of looking like a hospital or the neighbors. I think we can solve that issue with, with coverings.
No.
Okay. Are you going to, I have a comment on the.
Go right ahead.
So I, you know, the council can decide if you're going to be putting in the HOA, or we can require glazing, or give the option to the applicant. I prefer that it be a glazing, because on the first floor, who wants people to be looking into your living room? And, you know, it's kind of a privacy issue. So, and also, you know, and also solve your problem where people don't see the back of a television or don't see stuff like that. So on the first floor at least, I think it should be a glazing, and that's what I'm going, I want to require. So that's, that's what my, that's my feelings about that.
My problem still is with the facade. The window coverings, you know, that's nice. Okay, great. That's going to do somewhat something here. But you look at the facade of your office building there, and as again, right next to each other here, this is not contemporary as you're trying to express it in such a way. It is very institutionalized here. I'm wondering, can you, where you've taken out the balconies, do something with the, the facade there to make it somewhat more interesting? You look at the building across the street, and you see varying depth in the facade somewhat. I'm trying to find it here. So there's somewhat, in the George Lamb Building, there's somewhat of a change in the facade, just kind of the shaping of some of that. Is there a way to make it homier in such a way that, you've mentioned different, like stone textures and stuff? That would be helpful. I don't see that in what's being presented here, so I don't know where that would come up. But could you, please?
Allow me to present that.
Please.
Yeah. Well, first, yes.
Just a question. So we have the documents from the January meeting, then we have tonight's Power. We have the documents from January's meeting, and then we have the PowerPoint presentation and, which is called Slide 42, which has the addition of color. Are we kind of looking at that now as our basis? I think it's page two of the, it was part of the packet sent out to us, and it's called PowerPoint Presentation. No, it's called the February 19th, 2019. It's a second page, but it's actually page 42. And that's, shows that the balconies have been removed, and it shows a white line and some more color. Okay, so that's where we're starting from. I just wanted to know where we were. Okay.
And this is what's on the screen.
Vice Mayor Oliver.
Can I ask, has the Sarah Station sign been removed, or is this just, it just isn't shown in the rendering here?
It's just shown for the illustration of the.
Of the facade itself.
Yeah.
Okay. So you were going to answer Councilwoman Pappen's question.
Go ahead. Show us what you got.
So just to walk you through, the, the building is organized with a lot of depth and modulation. In fact, the, the balconies that we have are joined by a bay window. So you do have a bay window which projects out about five feet, and then the balcony gives a void which recesses. So you have that play in, of course, when you look at a straight-on elevation, you don't normally see that. We have some three-dimensional views to illustrate that. Also, we framed the middle six floors, middle four floors to help articulate that the building, to reduce the scale of the height of the building, so that the upper two floors, the ninth and 10th floor, have a lighter look to them and are more glassier at the top, because it sort of represents the better views are from the higher levels. What you see in the illustration is introduction of a stone-like material, or a cast stone material, like a, like a high-strength precast concrete, for one. We have actually looked at several alternatives.
We have.
One is this material, and I'll pass it around, but first, this is a ultra-strength concrete material called tactile. It's about a one-inch thick, and it comes in vertical panels, horizontal panels. It comes in many colors, and it comes in many textures. So what we're trying to do and achieve with this is more of a stone-like character that has some warmth and color to it to give a more residential character. And you can see that in the coloration on the facade, in those panel areas by the balconies and the bay windows. An alternative to that is a fiber cement panel, which has a smoother finish, but also comes in many colors that give a little bit more of a warmth. I'll pass this around in one second. Further to that, this is another tactile panel, the one that has more of a lighter color and a different kind of texture, that gives more of a horizontal, almost like a wood pattern. In fact, we've even used on one of our buildings in San Francisco, a porcelain tile, which this is, which this is, which is very high-strength tile, easy to maintain. And it also comes in many textures and colors. In fact, the ones I'm going to pass around have more of a wood grain look to it to give warm, again, to give some color and warmth to the, to the facade. Slide them down?
Let me just find the other photograph.
Can I ask you a quick question? So that, the, can I, oh, can I borrow that for a second? Where, where is this going?
That is one, let me go back to, that's an alternative for this area, that you see in the.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can you, can you use the hand mic or something? Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Can you hear me? Okay. That stone-type finish, having various colors, would be the area that you see in this light tan color.
On the bottom floor.
At the ground floor and on the first eight floors.
Okay. I'm just, I like the pattern, but I really think that the higher floors, you're not going to see the pattern, so.
You'll see it from their neighborhood. And that's one of our concerns, is, you know, we eliminated the balconies in that whole area. We wanted to add texture and color. And we think it's important that the overall expression of the building has that warmth added to it.
Yeah, I appreciate, I like the texture, but like I say, when further goes up, you're not going to see the details. Too far up.
The building that you mentioned in San Francisco that you've used, the faux wood porcelain tiles, if you could let us know where that is.
Folsom and Fifth.
Folsom and Fifth.
Yeah. The project is called, project is called Mosso. It's 900 Folsom and 265th. And the tile is on the Clementina Alley.
I'm only throwing this out there. There's a project that was built in San Jose where they did tiles that kept falling off. I think it was a townhome development. And I think it was a quality construction job, too. It's just been through heck on that one, and we wouldn't want to see that happen.
Do we have the full deck here?
Councilwoman Pappen, does that answer your question?
No.
Okay. Can I help you a little bit with that?
Well, yeah, I mean, I get, I get the idea here, and I appreciate that. These samples you have here, and maybe it's the colors, still, I appreciate the texture, but it still looks institutional to me. Is it possible to do more of a, if you're going to do this type of high-performance concrete panels, would it not be warmer to do one across the top of the building, but not the corner part, to kind of frame it in and make it more of a complete, if you're going for warmth and style, I know you're the architect here. I'm just, I'm asking to try to save this from being hospital-like.
Well, where we framed, this again is straight-on elevation, we framed all of these edges in a warm tone that you'll see in three dimension. The tile that I referred to in that project is here on the right, where it's actually a wood, it's a porcelain tile. Then when you get up, it looks like wood when you get up close.
That's your San Francisco building you're pointing to?
Yes, one of them, yes. It's the, these are the, actually, the work-liv units in that building.
Well, I see how, what I like about that is you see how you have a pattern kind of in front of the window there that makes it, that makes it somewhat more interesting that, I don't see the whole building here, which it would be helpful for us to see, but the window pattern here makes it less institutionalized to me.
Yes. And we introduced, this is since it's at the ground level, and it's one of those work-liv type units, which in San Francisco is called residential with accessory commercial. It has a small planter in front, you know, separates you from the street and provide a little bit more privacy. And of course, these would have.
I like all of that. And I'm wondering if you can modify this facade in some way to more reflect that type of design.
Well, maybe what we need to do is zero in and show you some of that detail as part of the, you know, the hearing, and to get you the better sense of that texture.
Is, is that carried on through the, in the building, or, Councilwoman Pappen, when I'm trying to help you with, if you can give him a little bit.
I know, I'm trying to.
Some sort of direction, like maybe you like more articulation, or you got more, more different patterns, or you don't like, because for me.
I think he's going to, can you try to bring up your San Francisco building? We could see that.
Just for me.
Yes, I could.
That would be lovely.
If we have Wi-Fi here.
Is it the Mosso building?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, can you bring it up on yours? You got your Wi-Fi up there?
Where's Google? Oh, Explorer. Okay, I don't use Explorer. You can't find one.
Yeah, I think, I think what, what makes these buildings interesting, and not that building, is that it's kind of a flat, when you, it's a flat plane on those buildings. And in today's, it looks more like an office building than a residential building. I think that's probably what you're, that's my issue.
This has, this doesn't look like a hospital, obviously, but these type of. This doesn't look like a hospital, obviously, but these type of...
Anyway, so you need to get on your microphone.
Oh, sorry.
And I think, let's see, what's the name of this project called?
Mosso.
So at home, if you're looking, it is 430 Clementina Street.
Oh, there it is. He's standing up there.
Clementina Street.
Trying to get, yeah. Trying to get some images up, but it...
Yeah, sure. Sorry. Go ahead. There you go.
This is some slideshow I'm not familiar with.
Sure.
That's your project, too, right?
Yes. This is showing all the amenities.
Exterior, please.
I know. By the way, this is one of those work-liv lifts here, anyway.
I would suspect some of this will be similarly used.
Yes. Let me see if I can find a better example. These are some night shots. Let's see. Looking for the Clementina Alley. Now here, here, this is the alley shot. I don't know if it's large enough, but this is that same tile. There are two buildings. One has the Clementina... The Clementina Building has that porcelain tile. And then the upper part is metal. The townhomes on the other side have these metal bay windows. And we went with vibrant Bauhaus colors, which we don't necessarily think is appropriate here. But you can see the scale at the ground level with using the tile and the texture helps give it a more residential look.
Well, even the...
Yes.
Let her finish first.
So the window pattern on these are much more, you say, playful in that they don't all line up. There's a little more what we call a dancing window pattern, which gives it, I think, helps sort of play with the scale of the building. That's not it. Yes. Yeah. So these are just some different views of different aspects of building. This is the deck view inside the building on one of the amenity decks. And these are some construction photos.
Well, I'm trying to give some guidance in that the budding neighbors were looking for more warmth here. I'm requesting that somehow this facade becomes even warmer, whether it's a use of more of these materials and maybe even... They wanted to go this light. To me, it would be more if it was... It would be richer if it was like a darker kind of... You see a lot of stone facades, like on the corner here, where there are just pieces of stone varying, you know, the corner here of Meadow Glen, I think it is, that building?
Right on the back of the building. I just saw that.
Yeah. That's a kind of warmth that I think would benefit this, save it from looking so institutional. Yeah, this...
Yeah.
Are you ready for the next comment, or...
No, I was just trying to see if we can get the full presentation up. I could show you some...
Okay, that'd be great. I'll take your time, please.
I'm trying to get more examples you can help us describe.
Why are you doing that, Councilwoman Schneider?
I don't think you can get it for tonight, but looking at the January packet on page 37, where you've got that three-quarter view here? I think what we're seeing now, we're seeing the building without the balconies and it looks flat. And I know there hasn't been enough time, but if we could get this kind of angled view, we'd see what the side of the building looks like now that the balconies are gone and we'd be able to see if there's any articulation. Your building up in San Francisco actually shows some pretty flat. And I think this actually has more depth than what the San Francisco building has, but I could be reading it wrong. But this view, I'd love to see more of kind of this angled view, which will let us see the ins and the outs, the flows.
All right.
And if you just agreed with this over the weekend, I can understand not having it, but it's page 34 view.
34.
37. 37.
Were you pulling out the most...
And then here's my other question. When, years ago, when I was first introduced to this building, especially the commercial building, the way the glass was going to go in as you move around the building from the outside, the colors are going to kind of change. And I understand that the residential buildings are trying to match and reflect that same building, which I think, I think you got consensus that we all really love the commercial building, or at least really like the commercial building. So now we're asking you to add more color. This is not unique. We all asked for more color on the other project on the other side of the road. I'm always worried when I see a lot of white, and we live with a lot of fog and clouds here, that white just gets lost, that I think with Councilwoman Pappin, I'd love to see more color. Oh, without the balconies.
Just for a point of clarification, though, for guidance. So color in terms of earth tone, colors, kind of the palette that they're introducing tonight?
I prefer that as opposed to saying primary colors, which really puts you into contemporary.
Just not the bright colors that he showed on the San Francisco building?
Correct. Those were more primary.
So more earth tone and more...
The bright, bright red we're not looking for. I think if I can try to...
Where does this one come from?
She just brought it up here. Page says page 40.
So just to clarify, warmer earth tone color?
And I would say, if you're picking up the maroon dark red here, that a warmer dark, yeah, darker like these would...
Could you show them to us?
I don't know if the audience is looking at...
Talking about earth tones?
Those kind of...
Earth tones?
Textures would warm up the whole building along that facade. Is this not...
Yeah, and that's what we're exploring. I guess right now we're trying to respond to the idea of introducing a warmer tones with texture. And we'll be looking at different examples. Those are a couple more.
And the glass itself has what kind of color to it?
We still will be using metal panel to frame the gateway along El Camino and the floor frames because for practicality of construction and maintenance. But the rest of the materials would be in a metal panel, I mean, a sort of a stone-like panel, which we would introduce in these other areas, even where it might be a white. It could be a... Some of those samples show a whitish color. So it would be, it would have a texture and it would look more like a cast stone.
And maybe not a stark, stark white, but a variation?
An off-white or a bone white, yeah.
Or my least favorite, Navajo white, but I'm getting, coming back to Navajo white. It has its place.
It's also the... Remember, you're looking here at the one facade. The other facade does pick up the curvature of the office building, okay?
Right. On R1, on the R1 building, it does have a curve on the inner side.
No, R1, yeah, R1 has a definite curve on the Sarah side. Again, we're dealing with constraints of the lot that, as it extends on the El Camino, the R1 building, that, the width of that lot and trying to accommodate this building on it has its challenges. And so by creating the curve on one side, it's, you know, you can't do it on both sides of this building like we did with the office building. It would be too much. We would lose too much square footage and it doesn't provide...
Somebody help him with his mic, please.
It doesn't provide the same aesthetic. I think a lot of the perception is, is because we don't have the angle to see the ins and outs. If you look at the picture of the, for example, the green wall on Sarah and you look at the building from that side, there's a lot of, there's a lot of play in that building facade, even with the balconies out of it. If you look at it from El Camino, when you're looking at the one that you focused on, Ms. Schneider, that too, you can, you can get the sense of the buildings in and out in play. But when you look at it, you know, as a fat, flat facade, it looks flat. I mean, it's just...
Right. No, I think the three... Is that called a three-quarter view or whatever that view called? A lot of those can be very helpful.
Yeah.
Especially as you play around with the colors. There's that stone right in the first...
That's inside. That's inside. But yeah, I think maybe layering your stones somewhat. And I agree with Ms. Oliva to the corner there, the total glass corner. I would think some variance in the window panes so that it's not so open here. You've done that in your, like, page 37. You've got spangle...
Spandrel.
Spandrel glass. That would make that maybe more interesting. Just something there.
And actually, we are introducing spandrel glass. It doesn't read that well on this rendering, but we are introducing spandrel glass in this corner.
We would encourage that, I think. Might make a big difference. So I hope we're trying to, we're trying to give you some things here to work with. Are we being at all productive in that realm?
I think we've heard you and I think that, I think we're in the right direction with the texture and the color. I think the color can be, you know, more saturated, like you're saying, and...
Give it an overall warmth here. I understand that the neighborhood didn't want something that was, you know, dramatic or something. I'm trying to pick up from your corner color here and go warmer, but it would still, I think darker might be a better perspective along those lines. And if there's anything you can do to... It's hard to tell from these pictures. What you've, your associate brought up is somewhat more interesting to us, that one in the corner there. But it's very hard for us to tell from what we have here. We just...
Can you pass it back down?
Well, they've got it there. That looks more interesting to us, I think. Do we have consensus that that looks somewhat more interesting? Did you see that, Ms. Schneider?
Yeah.
And if we could get those spangled glass kind of things, something to just enhance this facade here. That's the facade that concerns us the most. Would it be possible, too, as you did in your San Francisco building, to, on the ground floor there, have those planter box type of things outside the window? That did make it look more...
Yes. The landscape plan, which we showed earlier last time, does reflect its concern about, you know, units right up against the street or the plaza. So there are, maybe not exactly like I showed you at the Mosso project, but there will be landscape treatment to sort of create a privacy kind of buffer, separation.
Be interested in seeing that as well, because we do want to give it a residential feel, but a warmth and not so much industrial or institutional.
Okay, can we back out?
Okay. Well, I was trying to zoom in to kind of show you that this, this material that we're suggesting would have a texture and a color. And then at the, the upper floors, we are looking at a friended glass or spandrel glass possibility to, again, give a little bit more interest, both in color and in tone.
And if you go to the top, I was, that bar there, your white top frame, well, just on the building side, not the corner.
Right.
I'm wondering if it would frame it better if you went darker there as well, if you took your stone element across the top there. Yeah.
We can look at that.
Actually, I like the glass part because I really don't... If you, if you put it all the way at the top, it's starting to look more monolithic.
Well, I think she's talking about framing the top. I think she's talking about the parapet.
Framing? Uh, no. I like the way that is.
Well, I'd like to see how that looks.
Anyway, I, that's just my opinion. That's just my opinion. My biggest issue with this is it still looks flat and imposing. And I think the neighborhood has, and everybody has issue with looking at an 11-story building that looks like it's very imposing. So in order to break up the mass of it, I think you did a really good job on that, the sample that you showed in San Francisco, 1-5th and Folsom, where the bottom three floors are kind of same, but up top you have this fluctuation, interesting architectural treatment. Yeah. So to me, when you have just balconies all up and down, even though you have some variations, it's still a fixed plane, especially that side on El Camino. It's very, it's straight up and down.
Yeah.
So I, you know, I mean, there was, there's treatments you can do, like varying in colors. You can vary it in, you know, articulations. I mean, you did a wonderful job in some of your other examples and buildings in San Francisco. I think you can probably work that out. I'm not a fan of just a huge... I mean, that purple thing, that is okay, but that, that part where you, you framed those balconies right there, yeah. That's, that's just, you know, I mean, that kind of reminds me of, it is not enough, it's not of interest in that. It just looks like a big box pushed out.
Well, it's an attempt to actually project the entire facade out and frame, and frame the upper levels as special units and to articulate.
I know what you're trying to do, but that just makes it look bigger. I know, it's like, well, how are you going to make a big building look smaller? But that does make it look bigger to my eyes and imposing, because I think, you know, I mean, you're talking about a building that's going to be overshadowing a lot of Millbrae. I mean, nobody, not many buildings in the peninsula is going to be 11-story building. So you did a great job in articulations with the office building. Perhaps you could do something similar to the residential and provide a lot more architectural flavor. That's a little different than, than what's normally being seen in the peninsula, because I think they're all sort of kind of cookie cutter. So some articulation, meaning just changing and not just being flat, but some, some angles would really help.
Well, in a way, that's what we've actually introduced as you walk around. And I think maybe it's not as clear, but each facade is, has its own relationship to whether it's facing El Camino, whether it's facing California, whether it's facing Sarah. So we'll try to illustrate that more with, with the color being introduced throughout.
What, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
What about, okay, you've got a sample here again on page 37, white metal panel. And I'm not, but you see, you almost have a fake, looks like balcony in some of these. So it just has the look, but it's not really a balcony.
Page 37.
Yeah. It's of ours. I don't know if you have it here. You've got your various, you've got your vision glass, spangle glass, and then you've got a white panel, a white metal panel. And I see how some of these windows look like a, it's textured in such a way it looks like a balcony, but it's not. So it might add some more interest to the facade. But, Mr. Mayor, did you see that?
Page 37 in the January document.
If I may, I think on the elevation right next to the Sarah Station, metal panel to the right of that, I think that that... Correct me if I'm wrong, is that the elevation that you're looking at that fronts El Camino? Yeah.
Yeah, I like, what I like about that is, is the changing and definitely...
On that number three?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like number two is, this is, like, number two is, is the building right now reflects number two to me right now.
Yeah, number three makes it somewhat more interesting.
Yes.
And you're almost kind of simulating a balcony, but you don't really have one.
You know, and I'm not a big, I mean, I understand the value of having a balcony, but then I'm kind of thinking it's kind of overdone. I don't, you know, you're still going to have a view regardless. You're going to have a view. So you don't really need a balcony to enhance it, except to store stuff on balconies. But that's, that's always been, you know, what I've seen is that becomes a storage area. Yes. If you look at the building over here...
I'll disagree.
And that's great. And that's great. But I've seen a lot of people using it as storage, but...
Again, this would be an apartment, yeah, right.
There's, there's a lot of advantages to a balcony.
Like?
You can oversee...
Well, I'm saying, I'm saying I can understand the value, but also saying that you can also, you already have a view. A balcony is not critical to the view. The balcony is for you to sit coffee and drink outside.
Well, yeah, the neighborhood's already decided that. So we're trying to fix the facade. So we're trying to fix the facade in some way.
But I'm not taking any more balconies out, because I think the value to having a balcony in our city is great.
I'm not saying take out all the balconies.
That's good.
If I could, I just wanted to share that, you know, I think we've heard you, and what we would like to do is, is we would like to go back as the design team, incorporate the comments that we heard from the community tonight and what we've heard from you tonight, and then come back to you at public hearing with those comments addressed. And in terms of the modularization of the facade and the balconies, the one thing I would suggest is, is that the ability to step outside of an enclosed environment, to really, to step outside, is one of the key differentiators between an institutional building, an office building, and a residential building. So it will intuitively allow the public to know that that is not a hospital or an office building or any kind of institutional use like that. So I, I think that they are helpful in that way. And also, because, you know, it is often really sunny here, it is the kind of thing with the homeowners association guidelines, so they can, because these are rental buildings, they can have specific guidelines, you cannot store objects on them, we can safeguard against that, so those concerns can be addressed, Mr. Mayor. I do think that those are fair comments, and I think we could address them with guidelines that prohibit those kind of...
My point with balconies is it gives you an option. So I'm saying, you don't have to have balconies everywhere, because I understand the value of balconies, but also understand that you have options if you don't have all balconies on one side or whatever. It's not going to, to me, yeah, a balcony has the institutional, it has value to the person who's living there. But architecturally, it doesn't have to, you know, you can also remove the balconies, as you do in some of the San Francisco buildings. They don't have balconies, and it looks beautiful. So it gives you the option.
And so those are really, those are fine points, and that's exactly why, for the first six floors facing the neighborhood, that they were removed, so that there actually is more variation in the facade, there's more variation in the building as you move around, and especially in terms of, frankly, being mindful of what the neighbors' concerns are, those were all removed from that side. So if we could, what we would like to do is, we would like to take this back into the design team. I think we've heard very clearly the comments you've had and the concerns you have, and we would like to return to you at hearing, because we're, I think, next we're coming to Planning Commission, right? So we would like to go in front of Planning Commission with the comments and suggestions you have all made to us, incorporate those, so that by the time we get back to you for a final vote, we think you'll, you'll be pleased.
Councilwoman Schneider.
Can we, can we move on to a couple of other items that we talked about the last time?
Yeah, let me finish my comments, please.
Okay, sure, sure.
So I just want to confirm that, that Serra Station thing is still...
It's still there.
Sign's going to still be up there?
Yeah, it's still part of the signage program, yeah.
And everybody's okay with having that? What is it called, blade, or what do you call that? Architecture?
I think I'm okay with them coming back with the full design and putting that kind of good stuff on, whatever you're going to present to us. So I don't want to speculate and see what I'm not talking about.
Well, if I may, though, if you're not happy with that design, because I agree, I mean, from my perspective, I think maybe it could be redesigned, have more of a little bit of a wow factor to it, especially on that corner. But now's the time to, you know, speak up. It's appropriate.
And let me point out that that corner looks a lot better without balconies. If you don't agree with me, at any rate, it does, everything has to have a balcony, is my point.
That wasn't your point five minutes ago. We all agree on that. I think we're happy that the neighborhood is happy that there's no balconies on it.
I'm not talking about the neighborhood, I'm talking about myself and what I prefer. I understand what the neighbors have agreed to, and I'm not addressing that, because there's already a done deal with the neighbors. But my point is, is that, you know, you don't have to have, require, you know, we'll follow whatever the neighborhood wants to do and has agreed to. We're not going to change that. I'm not trying to change that. What I'm just saying is that give the architect some options for some changing the looks and not having to feel like you have to have a balcony in every, you know, everywhere in the window. That's my point.
I understand. Yeah, I, we have to do something that's a little more impactful here on this design here. I was looking up, actually, the hospital down the road there, which has a much more pleasant design than this. This reminds me, institutionally speaking, of something that is not as dramatic as that building down the road there. So facade-wise, that is more interesting than I think we find here. We're trying to offer some suggestions. I think we've given the architect a lot here, as far as trying...
Are you talking about Peninsula Hospital?
Yeah. That's what I was trying to, it's hard to tell on your phone here, but even, the hospital doesn't look like a hospital like this does. So we're looking for some assistance here to less it, make it less institutional-looking and residential, but more impactful. And I, you know, we're not architects up here, we apologize for that, but we have been elected here to try to give the public something that they can also be proud of here. And overall, you've got a lot of good things going on here, but just something to make it, I don't know what else to say, I'm sorry. I wish it could be...
Councilmember Poppin, we completely hear you. And, and so what the design team would like to go back and do is, come, we've heard you, that the, you'd like more impact visually, you'd like it to be more warmer and residential in character and feeling. And, and so why don't, if we, if you're all right with that, we'd like to take that into account and, and let AI come back with a design that incorporates those comments and lets you, you know, this is a public forum. And we'd like to come back into that public forum after we've met with Planning Commission and let you guys decide.
Councilwoman Schneider, you had a comment?
Well, this is taking, other than, just to finish that, a couple of different options. I think we've done that for 90 Hemlock, 90 Hemlock, which was very modern and red, white, and yellow.
30 Hermosa?
30 Hermosa, thank you, sorry. That one, that they gave us a couple of options, and if you could do that, I think that would be much appreciated. I frankly have no problems with the remaining balconies. The neighborhood is okay, then I'm okay. I'm going to switch subjects completely. What we talked about the last time you were here was, you, you provided some really lovely examples of potential public art, of fountain, of things like that, but they were all still kind of hypothetical. I don't know if, as it goes to the hearing, if you're going to come down with some more specific actual examples. I'd like to see those. I can tell you that the other TOD brought in an art gallery, and they're actually working on very specific public art, and I'd like to see that. I really like the space that you've got between my old karate studio and what will be the new building, but I know that I mentioned that there was a few more opportunities to maybe make a gateway. And I, I know that this has been really hard on the community, and, and I haven't mentioned that. I went through the same thing at my house in Mountain View, where suddenly some 10- and 12-story buildings came up, shared parking concept was being tested out, and I was at every city council meeting, and I lost. But over time, we became a neighborhood. And I want to keep in mind that someday, I am hopeful that Hemlock will be having coffee at the coffee shop at one of these locations. And I just want that opening on California, or the openings on California, to welcome the neighborhood when that time comes. Does that make, it's a little touchy-feely, but someday I think you're going to want to be able, or the bike route that we're going to be talking about at a different time, you're going to want to be able to get there, because you won't have to cross El Camino to get a nice cup of coffee. And, and that's the future, I'd like to see this come in. And I think with the warmer colors, I hope the neighborhood continues to participate with material choices on that. And there's a building down in Redwood City that they, that people who don't like it call it the cruise ship. It's white and blue, it's really close to the government center, it's 10 stories tall, it has a corner that steps right down to two single-story historic buildings. And it's the one that I've always looked at. And I'm always, glass can be lovely, but glass can also be kind of cold feeling. So that's why I'm kind of curious with the colors of the glass and how that will play with your new materials, because that could give it a warmer or a cold feeling. The people really hate that building because their, their accent colors were blue and white, stark white, stark blue, great on a princess cruise ship, but I think the neighbors found that just cold. So something along that line, and I don't know if that's help, helpful with, with the neighborhood here.
Well, I do appreciate your, your sense how this development and the Hemlock neighborhood could be knitted together some way socially, and I think that would be good if that was a goal that could be achieved. But we'll work on the architecture, we'll work on the colors, and it really is the palette that's, takes it not just through the, the building itself, but through the landscape, which also is part of your experience as a pedestrian.
Right, and I think it's that opening from California between the R1 building, the one on the corner of El Camino, and I'm doing that more for the audience, and the R2 building, which is going to front the railroad tracks. Make sure that that is warm and engaging. We've only seen, I think, the one drawing of it. Thank you.
Anybody else? Vice Mayor Holber.
Yeah, one suggestion is food for thought in terms of ways to make it a little bit more warm, less institutional, perhaps on that corner where the Serra Station sign is. I don't know if this would be possible, but perhaps varying the depth of the, the windows there a little bit from one story to the next, so it's not quite, you know, a, a flat wall, right angle.
Well, actually...
Right on the corner there.
That's actually what we did at the Mosso Project. We actually had sort of a twisted corner to give a little more dynamic character to it, almost like a Rubik's Cube.
Right. Yeah, so maybe a little bit more, you know, a dynamic corner, perhaps varying the building materials as well on the facade along the corner, so that it's not all the white trim between each, each story there. It could, you know, just an option.
More dynamic. We appreciate that.
Any other comments, I mean, for tonight? Yes?
Last comment. We want, we appreciate your working with us on this. And is there, I don't know what's appropriate here, City Manager. I know this is supposed to go then back to planning, but is there any way we can see not, can we see what is going to go to planning so that the developer's not wasting any further time and we can somewhat empower planning? You just, I don't know how this works exactly.
Yeah, I mean, just saying everything, and I think this response is going to garner a lot of size, but I think this is a complex project. It's important to the city. I still think that there's some improvement. So I would recommend that we come back one more time to the city council in a study session, and we focus, and we actually, you know, see what the changes are for the building. I think it's that important. This is the largest project that the city has ever seen, and I think it is important.
There goes the attorneys. You're pissed off the attorneys are...
That's okay. I don't think there's any legal issue here. I think it's a process issue. And so I think that, you know, what I'm hearing is, is there needs, still needs some work. And with that, I think it does merit a continuation of another study session, so we can actually see the specifics of the design.
Well, I think that's what our homework would be, is to do that more work and then come back to you at the hearing to present it.
Well, prior to the Planning Commission hearing, so the city council can see it one more time and, and, you know, provide their input prior to than the Planning Commission hearing.
We might be able to do that, just you update us, and then it goes to planning.
I'm a little concerned about taking the job away from our Planning Commission. I wouldn't, I would opt for a joint session, but I don't, I'm not so sure that it's fair to appoint our commissioners and then all of a sudden have them, you know, receive the project because we, we approved it. So if it could be in the consensus of a, of a joint meeting, I would be up to that.
I'm not, I'm not against that. I mean, we're trying to give as much guidance as possible to go to the Planning Commission. I'm not trying to usurp their job by any means. So that would be, I mean, I'm not against a joint meeting, but by having a joint meeting, you're kind of, you're making it awkward for the Planning Commission, because in the end, the city council decides. So I, I'm not sure how that works. I'm trying to streamline it in any way I can.
I think that's fair game. So, City Manager, with all due respect, I think that the, the process should go to our Planning Commission, and it should come to us. They should give us the recommendation for, for approval. And with all due respect, it is the biggest project we've ever seen, but it doesn't mean that their heads are better than ours. So I would like to probably go against what you're saying.
I agree.
So another solution here is to have this design peer reviewed by another urban designer architectural firm and provide us with input. I've, I've used that successfully in the past, because you're getting, you know, an opinion of, of an architect, and they're doing their best, but maybe this does require a peer review or second set of eyes for, for just some minor adjustments and, and some input.
I'm sorry, I don't know how that works.
In a way, we do have our peer review. I mean, we're two firms working together and focusing on different aspects, and, you know, maybe this is an opportunity...
So that is something we could offer up. So I'm the architect of the office building, not, not of the residential buildings.
Oh, I see, okay.
So this is the architect of the residential buildings. But we are jointly on the site, and so I would be glad if the developer would like to do a peer review at the behest of the city and work with the architect of the residential buildings to take into consideration the comments we've heard from you tonight.
And I, and I do say that with all due respect, I just sometimes when we're, when we're stuck, as we are right now, it may get us off, off-center and may provide a, a path.
The peer review would, sorry, through the mayor? The peer review would go to our commissioners?
Yes.
For presentation, and then to us?
Well, the...
So the way, the steps would be, so we would do an internal peer review, we would meet back with the city, who's, your representative staff, who've heard everything you've said, assuming that they feel like that your input has been taken into account, the revised design will then go to Planning Commission, and then if they approve it, it would then come to you as a process.
I'm good with that. Sounds good.
Okay. Vice Mayor Holber.
Agreed.
Right, is there anything else, then we can call it a night tonight? Are we done? Yes, sir? Mr. Muzi?
Yeah, yes, I would like to have a date. A month between each meeting is really not acceptable.
Well, it depends on when you get the designs. So, you know, we could say a date, and then if you don't have the designs that don't go through peer review, it won't happen. So if you can give us a date on the designs and when they could be modified, that would be helpful to start our calendar.
If you give me two minutes with my folks here, I'll find out.
Sure. And then, does this go back to the neighborhood before it goes to planning? Or does, nope, neighborhood comes to planning. You're done.
They've already made agreement, so...
This is a public process, and the Planning Commission is a public hearing.
I mean, I, I think we've, at my understanding from, again, we did not, you know, we weren't personally there, but what we've been told is that staff has been able, and all of the conditions are, have accepted the conditions, and they will be put into, you know, conditions of approval, so that they're rock solid and locked and will happen. You know, that part of it's there. Now, I, I have no problem with, you know, they're seeing what we submit. I mean, they'll, they're part of the public, they're entitled to come and comment on it. If they don't like the colors, they can let us know. But I, I, you know, at some point, we have to move forward here, and I feel like I'm dancing in place. So, you know, I, I would like to get a date, just to know if we, if we can't do it, if we can't do it, it's our fault, but if we don't get the calendar, then...
Well, the last developer couldn't do his dates, so...
I tell you what, let's let, let's staff...
We'll let staff figure it out.
Try to figure out as soon as possible.
We understand where you are.
You know, I, I, we're not, we're not trying to prolong this, but it is the largest and biggest impact on the peninsula, so we don't want to rush this unnecessarily, but we do want to make sure that the project moves forward as quickly as possible. Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
There's plenty of 10, 12, 14s.
You want, did you want, did you want to? Oh.
Samhain County, we might have the tallest. It's not the peninsula.
I, I realize, I, I mentioned that already.
Yeah, well, that can be a part of the peninsula.
So just while, while they're, while they're having a powwow, we are going to get this project, and we're going to have an architecture peer review, and it's going to go to our Planning Commission. Our Planning Commission's going to make a recommendation to council, and the dates of this all happening will go through our staff.
Yes, we'll, we'll work with them. We clearly understand.
And neighbors at that Planning Commission?
They can go to the Planning Commission.
Perfect. Thank you.
And I would expect that these design modifications and peer review would go through staff and then on to the Planning Commission, so the staff will be assisting in the process.
Perfect.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just one, just minor clarification. So the process with design review is actually the planning commission has the authority to approve the project. The council has the authority to call it up. The council's made it.
We've already been clear throughout this entire process that these two projects are automatically called up.
Correct. I'm just saying, we.
So don't, don't think it's final at that point until it gets through.
Technically, just looking at the rules, it's not, the process is the count, the planning commission does technically have the ability to give the final approval. The council will then take it up.
We're just talking, we're just talking about the legal semantics.
We've been clear for the record that the significance of all these projects need to go before the council.
Well, no, no, no. Okay. But I think, I think, would you just want to speak in in the terms that are normally what's the process is? And the process is that the county, the planning, normally, the planning commission approves it. And if the, if the city council doesn't, doesn't, has problems with the design, then they appeal it. So basically, we're just going to two for one right now.
I used to want people to get confused, because the next time a regular design review comes up, someone will say, well, isn't that going to the city council?
Right. So this is.
No, that's not how the process works.
Right. So we're just wanting.
That's what we're doing. There's no doubt what we're doing. I just want people to understand that the process.
Yeah, at home, so.
Normally works a slightly different way.
So at home, we're following the process, except we're accelerating it. Okay. So if there's nothing else, we got to close session. Meeting adjourned.
We have a break session too?
Yeah.